Morning.
All these order, we have a forum. I'm team motion to approve the agenda in the next. One second. Okay, right. Post. Motion carried. Mister Brown, how you doing this morning?
Morning, how are you guys?
Yeah. So.
Project update. Um. The Freedom Street Box Culvert was removed last Monday, or the bridge was removed Monday and by Wednesday they were putting boxes back in. So I wouldn't be surprised if by the end of the week that road was opened up. I mean, they were already back filling it Friday.
That's a box cover.
That's a box cover on three fifty, so that's kinda. In the works, I met with WHKS last week on some uh projects, future projects and get some bridge stuff done, we will have some. We have some small uh, we'll look at some uh bridge work with them, so there'll probably be some agreements coming through. Um also, this winter is going to be our our annual, our biannual. Bridge inspection, so we'll have an agreement coming through there and there always a. Price shocker to get that stuff taken care of, but we need to do it, so there'll be that stuff coming through. So three fifty, three ninety, they poured the railing, I think Thursday, Friday last week, so that railing is done, so they should be focusing now on backfilling and then. The next one will be their uh bridge approaches. That project, I don't know what their time limit is, I think about maybe two more weeks at the most for that one. Um harvest probably done by then, but the 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 locals that are adjacent that have been out, they've been having access to there, so. Uh the big thing one oh five, um they are hopefully gonna get mud on the ground here in the next hour. How they start just today, getting everything team again. I was up early then, paper soon across the road yet, so we gotta get that ones up and. They've got it calibrated, just get everything, make all the, make sure all the bolts are tight and then start moving, I don't know. You know, the it kinda stinks the weather forecast is what it is this week, but. They have fifteen trucks and nine drivers because of. Either they can't get enough help or people are sick, so we're looking at maybe half a mile to three quarters of mile a day unless something else, the way the plant can put out product, that's probably what we're looking at, I know earlier was thinking more three quarters of mile, but. Just depends on how close they get to the plant, only people they can get do the work, so.
Probably a lot of farmers who would drive if they can't film.
Well. Good money. So. But I think those are the project updates, I'm gonna make sure I hit everything. And then we will work, I talked to them, we're gonna get some traffic control.
Okay, thank you.
That is on the D two where that makes sense.
Busy out there this morning.
Yeah, they have trucks parked alongside waiting, don't aggregate into the plant site, so. Um. So we're trying to close out the Freeborn Wind Deer Creek project and I've got some information from them, there are some locations and I'm getting some more information from them yet before. Um we know, so there's some road sections on the gravel that. They did a post inspection of all the roads and then some, in a lot of cases, the gravel roads showed. Better improvement after the project was done because they stuck so much money into the roads prior to, so. When you look at the falling weight, the number tests and stuff. The roads are better than they were when before they started because all, there are some locations yet that they say need to be addressed. And they wanted to know what they wanted to do, and I said, you know what? I'm not about to wanna put rock down these roads before winter. I said, you let me know the locations and what we think you need. We'll come with an estimate. They can reimburse us, we'll take care of it, maybe during our annual rock run next year. They can reimburse us for those costs, so wha- what they're gonna do is let me know what their anticipated thoughts are and what those locations need. We'll price it. Put a little money for administering it.
Yeah, they like frostbite spots or something.
Well, I'm not quite sure, they just said there are certain locations along a couple stretches of road that probably are soft or probably either didn't get taken care of when they did it first time or they're just. So there, I I said, I want some clarity on the locations because they said, well, we can do it or you can do it, I'm like, I don't really want you guys to take care of it, now we're getting into. You know, first of all, we're in the middle of fall, fall harvest and if winter's coming up, there, what has dried has been, there's probably not, some of our road rock we put down in the summer hasn't tied down yet for winter, so. I said, let's just hold off. Roads have been pretty decent, hold off till spring, we're gonna manage it, we'll get an estimate, we'll get reimbursed, so. The second thing is, is, is we've throughout the project, they've been using a lot of hard service roads and. They they use their axle easel number, their gravel equivalency, whatever the calculations they use to figure out what, you know, the the loss of life is to the roads and. And uh it didn't seem to be too big of a loss of life because of our condition of our hard service roads, however, there were some other roads that didn't get included. Into that, one of them, one stretch of road was from. Trendo Quarry and the Uland Quarry, east and west, and then up north on Thrush. They didn't include that, I said that we need that included, and then there were stretches of one oh five, which they thought was a state highway, I said, well, you guys were using that road too, so. They've added in some additional. Funding for that, originally before those roads were added in, they were, they were owing us two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. And after reevaluation, I think we're up to three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars, so they wanna know if the board will accept that payment for the use of the roads and based on the. Based on the information I've got from their engineering reports, I think it's a fair, a fair deal, I mean. Yeah, we had some soft spots on the, on the, on the asphalt roads when it was hot from trucks making wide turns, but. At that, they think that the, the cost of, the cost of uh. The the lost life of the roads is valued at two hundred and six, three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars.
Could that go back into the highway one oh five?
Well, it will come to secondary roads, however you wanna handle it.
Yeah. I think you'd wanna, you're not that kinda.
Well, it can come back to general or to to secondary roads, you just don't take that out of. Five, I mean, there's so many different. You know, technically, it's for the loss of life, whatever, so, cuz it, not all of it's gonna be one oh five because we did have Vine Avenue, Thrush North, all these other high hard services that they included in this.
Right.
The additional hundred and thirty two thousand was for one oh five and. Thrush and I think.
Right. Cuz we're gonna need to address those hard surfaces road at some point here in the next.
Years. Yeah, and and of course, they weren't brand new roads when they started, so there's also life loss required of them, so. People wanna look at it as a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars for one, for those additional roads doesn't seem like much, but also remember that they weren't new to begin with and the loss of years of service. Is. Not even two years' loss of life, a loss of service, so you start doing those calculations and that's seem like a fair.
Yeah, so this would be, we should really call it an action, but we're done for next week or whatever.
Well, they just wanna know whether, you know. You know, is 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 Worth County. Acceptable to these numbers and, I mean, we can put it out for discussion next week.
And I I would just.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, making an action item because it's. Just to keep it straight and just say that we accept it, or if we're closing something out, we do it with trade this project, we're closing on a project, it's a.
That's why I don't know, we can do that, just wanna give you a heads up on it.
You're good with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I, you know, it's hard, how do you determine the loss of life on a road? If they've got the scientific data, they have the pre and post. Third party evaluations. To analyze this stuff. We would be doing the same thing.
Some of them were bought it to.
And. Right, right, so I mean. Yeah, unless there were specific locations and they did, you know, on. On Vine, they had some crane crossings that they paid to patch back up because they, you know.
They did.
I've looked at some of the other hard service roads and I cannot see any sort of. Physical evidence of deterioration and if there were, we had them fix them, so, and most of that was crane crossings, the other stuff you just kind of cannot see without doing this. The falling weight deflucometer test and, and the, in addition to, you know, I told you about the gravel roads being in better shape, well. We're a lot drier this year, so there is some. There is some of that, that is just different because you got a dry base versus a wetter base, you're gonna get a more solid road, so. But all in all, I think what they did for our roads is, is more than we ever could have done, so. So. Um, that being said, yeah, we can put this on for discussion next week and then.
Okay.
The other thing I have is I'm in possession of, I guess I, I hadn't ever really gotten the. I don't know what you wanna call the final road and drainage easement maintenance agreement for the new. Wind tower area there, they just asked if I would review it for the roadway side, so I had it once before, but I don't know if I've ever had the. Final version, I think I got this one back in. I don't know if it's March or May, whatever, and so this is the latest and greatest I'll review that and let them know if I see anything that's. By the order, I wanna add things to it, so.
Good. Good to me. That's all I've got for you this morning, unless you guys have something you wanna discuss?
No, if you can just check on three ninetieth there for me.
I will.
And see if we can do that. It'd be it. Thank you, Rich.
All right.
All right.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh drainage. So you had some.
This would be right away.
Um might be some.
Or is there another one?
Might be some redeemed stamp warrants to.
Yeah, there's two things.
Yeah, yeah, there's stand warrants and then right away.
So they need to be separate. Can. Most of it's up to the grain.
Right, there's most to accept the variance claim, you're a second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on? Hearing none. All favor I. I post.
Taxes that pay, there should be more of those.
Can be.
This one's much less than last week.
Well.
She just sent this right away. That's what I was asking, is two motions or not, so it's just the right away. Right away purchases of what we're approving right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else to drainage? Uh claims, questions or comments on the claims? There's a motion to approve claims.
I'm making motion to the claims.
Favor I.
All right.
I post. Here. The reports.
The report.
Record for fourteen hundred and. Order. To separate reports. Reports.
Who's on first?
He is the first.
Either way, yeah.
Mark was second. All right, any other questions or comments? All favor I. I post. That's. Uh the payroll eligibility or salary changes. Liquor license.
No.
Maneuver management plan.
I sent one, but.
Yeah. One didn't get on the week before.
We have to write this down.
Is on my six.
No. Just missed last week.
Yeah.
Oh, put it on next week, it's, it's a big deal.
Okay. No, I don't think he did, so I don't remember seeing one this week, so.
Okay, well, next week. And where's back home, Melissa?
Morning.
Morning.
We have a revolving loan fund application, so I need to organize it and I will send it out to the committee later this afternoon. Um, then uh AJ, I think you're on that committee. And then um. I met with uh SBDC and I went and visited. Another company in Minnesota that was interested at the interchange, but um it's very beginning stages, so. It would be very, uh this is a slow process, but hopefully um. They can get something worked out and it sounds like um that entity would be uh. Interested in an actual lot and not. A lease as part of that developer. I did reach out to another entity to talk about a space for lease with a developer's um idea. And they had no idea what Worth County had done to the interchange. So I think the next step is to explore some signage out there. Um it doesn't have to be renderings, it's just, you know, maybe a picture of the maps or of the lots and say, for sale, please contact so and so.
We've talked about it, we just haven't acted, we need to get something out there, so you can, you can get it designed up maybe for us and.
Yep, so that's gonna be one of the um items that I'll, I'll talk about at the exec board meeting.
Okay, perfect.
That's next week, right?
Uh the eighteenth.
Next Monday, okay. Yeah, if you can get a mock something up for us, that'd be nice. Take a look at it. All right, any else?
Uh I think those are the major items.
See you, see you Thursday, fourth or evening.
Yep, Thursday, yep.
We'll see you then, thank you.
Bright and early.
Thanks.
You bet.
All right, Jeff Lorbal, Worth County zoning, uh development comprehensive plan update, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update, the uh, our original plan, we had communicated that uh we keep going off with. Surveys to the public at large, county department heads and so on, to assess the goals that were outlined in the two thousand and six plan. Um discussion among the zoning commissioners on Wednesday evening. Um we ultimately decided that we were gonna delay that activity until January. Uh it was felt that with harvest going on right now, we're gonna get a lot better participation all around. Uh if we postpone this until after harvest and then we run into the holidays, so um it'll still be. Uh the plan to engage the township trustees, as as discussed, representatives from there, but we'll put all that stuff together then to kick that off in January as opposed to now.
Sounds like.
Let you know, so if you're looking for those things, there'll be a couple of months yet.
Sounds like a good idea, cuz yeah, a good portion of this county is real busy right now, so.
Yep.
It will be for the next few months, so. Oh, it sounds like a great idea to me. Questions for Jeff, guys? Yeah. Uh is Mark Paul joining us today or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, now just, yeah, kinda similar here to to Jeff, I think for this week, just wanted to make sure that we. Um had a touch point on, on the agenda in case there's any items that follow up items to discuss. Um but internally, we're, we're still kinda working through um. Working through the, the response and some of the conversations that, that we had had last week on this call. Um. And, and are planning to get back to uh to the group here and. And in the near future with um, you know, any kinda. Comments and, 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 and potential paths ahead, so um just wanted to be on to have that and uh, you know, be if there are any questions.
Yeah, do you have any questions for Mark?
No, you guys will be in touch this week, I assume.
Yep, we will, we'll, we'll be reaching out kinda throughout the week, after we um. You know, get, get, get everyone's heads together here and uh. Um. Get your thoughts on some things.
Thanks, Mark.
So, thank you, Mark.
Thank you all.
All right, um. Wind ordinance discussion and possible action.
I just left that.
Yeah, that's fine, I know, last week um we had left with the. We're gonna go through ourselves, highlight anything that we thought might need change. And then we can send that back to the zoning commission. Um. Let them look at it since they developed the ordinance, so and one of them was setbacks from property lines, correct, what? What do you, well, what, what do you think?
I think that it ought to go from the residents.
And that's where most, any.
Because. I think I explained it last week, we're depending on how big a farm you own, and if you don't own the land on the other side. It throws a monkey wrench in this. Because it just gets way out there and on the other side it gets it normal. So if it was all, if everybody owned the same amount, you know, if everybody owned a small area, it'd be a whole different, different deal, I don't wanna be so bad.
Right.
So, and I've already conveyed to Jeff. Some of the stuff that I wanna.
Pretty much property lines need to be removed from the ordinance pretty much.
Well, no, it doesn't need to be removed because there needs to be a setback from the property line for windmills sitting next to it.
Yeah, as as far as the property line.
Residents.
As a. Yeah, versus residents.
Residents needs the property lines, no, because that, that property lines includes right out in the middle of the field. So property lines need to be removed.
What do you mean by property lines?
From the ordinance.
Out in the middle of the field.
So if you have.
Be the edge of your property.
Granted, if you have, if you own. Three different owners of an, of three eighties in a row, for example, if you include property lines in there, it makes all three of those properties possibly not eligible for wind.
That's what I said last.
So the residents, the residents is the word, I mean, from the residents, not from the property lines, the property line wording basically needs to be removed from that ordinance.
About as far as the number and feet. Does that seem to stay the same or do?
Sixteen hundred feet, right?
Yep. What's the, whose opinion on that?
My opinion there is if you are a participating landowner. I don't think there should be anything, I think it should be the manufacturer's safety distance. If you don't wanna keep it away from your house far enough to keep you healthy. That's between you guys and the worthwhile wind.
And technically, doesn't need to be in the ordinance, because it still comes down to if I own a property, if I own a hundred and sixty acres from the acreage zone. And I wanna have it eight hundred feet from my house, that's between me and the company, it's not between me and the county.
Well, I think there ought to be a manufacturer's safety distance in there, if the manufacturer says it needs to be back this far, I think that ought to be in there.
Well, I would imagine, I would imagine, and then the company, the company's not gonna put it up if, I mean, so again, I mean, it's. Why are you, why do we need to control what I wanna do as long as the company is gonna follow the guidelines, which I would assume they would. I don't really, it's just unnecessary language in ordinance.
I do not agree with you.
So then you're.
Because of that.
You're controlling.
Should fall over in a disaster and go through that house, are they gonna sue the county because we didn't put a manufacturer's safety distance in there?
The contract is between me and the company, not between me and the county.
Well, I know how that works too, it doesn't always end up between you and the company, it falls over on the county, I don't think it's a big deal. We have a minimum of manufacturer's safety distance. You know, I would, I would think that most of your windmill companies would be using that anyway.
Right, so would be written into the, it should be written into the agreement between me and the company.
So it doesn't really matter if it's on the ordinance or not, for our protection, I think it ought to be on the ordinance.
But on some of these are the, on the, on the agreements with. The landowner and the food company. It, does it state exactly where that's gonna go or is it state, they just have an easement to your property, don't they?
I don't know, and the new contracts out stated, and I don't know on the original ones when they started building these, I'm not exactly sure, I think before the final contracts were signed. I believe they had, they knew exactly where they were going.
Okay, this, from what I understand, the, and I don't have one, I've never even seen one. Is that you get, I've been told that they get right or easement rights to your property, so if you sign up eighty acres, they get rights to that eighty acres, not. You know, so they can put that anywhere in that eighty acres.
But I, but I do know, I've talked to a couple of people that were approached on land, and some couple accepted, a couple didn't. They basically had the contract written with those terms in it.
Sure.
You know, before they signed a, a broad raised. Wind agreement with them.
Right, but and then, and then every contract may be different, depends on the landowners working out, that's, you know.
That's between, there's a lot of that is between the, the landowner and the, or and the wind company or. Development company, whatever it is.
Yeah. So.
Doing your due diligence as a landlord, I mean, before you sign a contract.
Yep. Well, I agree with that.
There's really nothing else in this county that we have contracts for, I mean, the county controls, it says what they do, I'm not sure why we're just going after. That, I mean, that contract is between me or whoever owns that land and that. Signing that contract, so I guess I'm going after the safety of the citizens.
Ask the question on the process.
Sure.
Um, I, I thought that what was um, the sequence of what was gonna happen was um individually, each of you would provide. Um input on what you believe should be changed. Uh so that we would then make a, a redline version of the ordinance that, that shows all of those changes. Uh so that you could see them in context inside the ordinance, but then we were gonna create a separate document. With each of the changes listed sequentially um so that. Because, you know, as we see, Enos has one opinion on certain setbacks, Mark has a different opinion on certain setbacks, so. We collect all that in that separate document, that sequence of changes um uh with the uh review comments by the zoning commission. So that you guys could then discuss each of those potential changes uh and, and vote on which change. Uh or changes uh you wanted to make and then we would provide the clean copy. So Enos, Enos had provided me um a document that shows all the changes that, that he wanted. Um and then I expected that we would get the same thing from AJ and Mark.
I apologize, I didn't give you that, I've got my notes here.
No, I don't.
Okay. I'm the only one that turned one in.
Yeah, I read through it all and no, I like to see change.
That's it.
You get your homework.
So if you provide that, you got your notes.
I just, yeah, basically what we're talking about here right now, Jeff, so, you know, I. Setbacks, I guess it's sixteen hundred feet, if that's where you're at, that's probably acceptable unless you're going for more. I, I truly think some of that language doesn't need to be in that contract, I guess that's, will be up to the final decision, that's, that's my opinion. You know, I, again, we're, we're stepping on. Owners' rights here, their, their rights to make a decision whether it's stupid or not, that's, that's not the point. You know, if I so choose to allow them to put it closer than what the county is recommending, recommend, recommendations are. And again, I would assume nobody's gonna build one closer than they should, you know, everybody's big business.
But that's an assumption. You're assuming that they're gonna use their head.
But you're still signing a contract, I'm still signing a contract as a landowner, making that mistake, that contract is as legally binding as this ordinance is. Right?
Yeah.
Should be, as far as, as far as the setback goes for a participating landowner. Other than the manufacturer's safety distance, I'm, they can do whatever they want to, they can put it out their back door if they want to, if the safety standard says that's what it is. If you don't wanna have a safety standard in there for the citizens, I basically don't have a problem with that either.
So.
I could bounce on that one.
For the citizens, you're calling an owner a citizen, you're, you're.
It's kind of all the people.
Broad based, I mean. The words you're using are pretty broad based, I'm just talking about each individual contract.
We use owner for those individual contracts that are participating.
Well, let's just put it on paper and give back to the zoning commission.
Yep, so, cuz that's, that's the least, that's probably the least of the things that we wanna change in there, is what they're gonna do with the participating landowners. That's kinda their call. Right, Mark?
Well, I think we're arguing what to, same time or two different things. I just had a question too, and I'm trying to read this.
Sure.
Right, on the pre-application process. Now, maybe.
Which particular section?
Oh, I think it was um. Back to about twenty one, twenty two, I think it was. Just talks about the process, pre, you know, the application process.
Sure.
And.
Pre-application.
Pre-application, I think it was, so. Correct me if I'm wrong. So before a company can even come into Worth County and talk to landowners, they have to go through a pre-application process.
No.
So they can go out and do legwork, then the preapplication process would be between. That company and the zoning commission or the ordinance, whoever's gonna oversee this ordinance.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So. What it says, the, the pre-application informational conference, it's a two-part process and should be held not less than sixty. Nor more than ninety days prior to the projected date of the submission of the application for the permit.
Gotcha, so I just tried to read that and I've read it several times, thinking exactly what you're saying, but then in the back of my mind, it's like. Okay, you're telling a company they can't come in here, it just, was just hard to read, I just want clarification on that. So. And then, you say, I don't think Jackie needs to be listed as the one that has to get under the, under the application page twenty two, you got the auditor listed. I think that truthfully should be, I'm thinking the zoning board, the zoning administrator should be able to get all that together. So what do we have a zoning administrator, this is gonna fall on the zone, it says auditor, we'll find the uh. Didn't make that note, hang on, it's on page twenty two. Like we were talking about last week, I think you thought it said assessor, it says auditor. Says, which will be B, section B under. Under pre-application, so it lists the name and address of all property owners located in the project area located in fifty two hundred and eighty. Feet of the turbine and the project shall be verified by the Worth County. Unless I've got an old, that's what that.
Well, that's on twenty one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, twenty two. Okay. So it's, it's towards the end of the pre-application.
Yeah.
So to me, I'm just think, I don't know why we're going on auditor, I mean, I think that should be, this, this is part of zoning. As far as I'm, could be part of zoning going forward, it's gonna be some stashing. As far as I'm, could be part of zoning going forward, it's gonna be stashing to the current zoning ordinance for the center townships.
Yeah, so, um, there's a requirement, um,
Must be some kind of code process.
Well, there's, there's a requirement during the, um, application permitting process to, um, provide a mailing to each of the landowners in the project area. And so this is talking about the, um, the, the company that's seeking the permit is to provide the names and addresses of all the property owners located within the project area.
To the.
Um, and then the, the auditor, right, so they provide that, well, to the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Um, and then the intent here was that that list would be verified by the county auditor or somebody. We just, the, the commission just felt it important that, um, the list of property owners that are developed by the applicant needs to be verified to make certain that we're not missing somebody out there.
Which by code would probably still.
I suppose, curious if that has something to do with.
Since, since we keep track of the property.
Okay.
But we'd just be verifying.
Right, you're just verifying.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's just me by default because of.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah, we, we.
I get lots of fun stuff.
Since we don't, we serve a state.
Thanks for coming.
No, I just saw that. It's like, okay, it just doesn't make any sense that, you know, to me, that's for going to the zoning administrators, Jeff. I mean, otherwise, what do we have them for, you know?
So it, the list, everything is going through the zoning administrator, but he's not qualified to do the validation of property.
Yeah, just, okay. Yeah.
All right. Well, what's up? Let's just go ahead and get Mark and have the rest of our stuff on paper.
And that's pretty much what I want.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll get it sent out to you then, Jeff.
Okay.
And, uh, let you guys meet again. We say first part of November.
Yeah, November, that first Wednesday.
Third?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. I'll get that done for you this week. Get it out to you.
Yeah.
All right, any else or if you don't know? Uh, people's service.
He's, didn't have anything to.
It'll be next week.
Next week.
Uh, homewarming. Just go sit on that one.
I haven't seen an app yet.
No, she got back. I called her twice this weekend.
Okay.
She said the first part of this week, so I'll just keep reminding her every day.
Okay.
Still working on it.
Department head discussion. Department heads out there. Sure, but you have a case.
There's a multi-vehicle accident on.
Well, that's for the law patrol.
Oh.
Something about a parking, a stop.
All right, anybody else? Any other department heads? Questions, terms, or? Say if you got some, uh, stadium lighting on.
Those look good, Bill.
Did you see it?
Yeah, well, Brian sent the picture. He's, there's, neither guys are making it, Brian.
That'd be nice for election, right?
I, yeah.
Yep, so, uh.
I can't wait to see the one out front, because it's all been dark out there.
The, do you see the pictures?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I got it.
I just wonder if the neighbors are gonna not be happy about it.
Brian said that those are turned up to their highest level right now, and you can't turn them down.
So are those motion or they'll be on all night? They're just.
They're, yeah.
Maybe just came in.
I could read by it probably.
That's because you're on the safety.
Oh.
Committee, maybe it's.
That's why.
Nobody can sneak up.
For security, yeah.
Do they shine over the neighbors?
Well, not a lighter.
I like the ground up, but it.
It was.
Yeah.
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 It's pretty impressive.
It is, looks good.
I, yeah. It looks like that.
And it looked like he didn't mess up any brick or anything either. It's all, no. I don't know if you can mess it up, but it looked like a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah.
I'm looking it out there, but.
Probably a nice new spot for us to hang out.
Yep. Or road control.
Okay, uh, we raise a weekly. Enos?
I have nothing.
All right, Mark?
Dan and I met with, uh, Hailtown City Council. They're suggested raise and they were all understanding, I guess, you know, and, um, supposed to have saved the committee. I apologize. I got held up with a flat tire down in Mason City. Mis-calculated my schedule a little bit, so I'm assuming Dan ran the show. He's vice chair, I believe, and, uh, so I clearly everything got taken care of, lights wrapped them. Monthly meeting or whatever, so.
The big part of this, I, I phoned in on it, and, uh, I think the big part of it was back to the discussion. I think the, what we had the most of was the election uh, security, security again. We just, we, we're not compliant. Um, that's, that's something we'll have to address somehow, somehow. So I, it, it's an ongoing discussion is pretty much.
Yeah.
So other than that, I think, you know, we've, we've started addressing some of the things that was in the citizen report. Uh, and that's the big thing that says it wants to see is a, you know, a progression forward. So I think we're in good shape as far as committee goes. Uh, no update on the cameras yet. I think Dan was gonna talk to Double E. On the, the, I do have to do on some cameras.
Good, good. Good. Um, well, I had a couple of phone conferences last week with, uh, the people that are looking at Manly. Um, we have a port authority meeting this week to discuss the gas line down there, so uh, we got some final numbers back from Northern Natural Gas on costs. And, uh, timing and stuff like that. We just need to figure out how we can work with these people and.
Listen to you, kind of like projected or when we did the study, kind of an oversized pipeline and.
Um, yeah, the capability will be there.
Yeah.
So what, the way it's looking now is, is they come from Hailtown area straight over to Manly.
Okay.
Instead of coming from Joyce, to get them what they would need for day one of production.
That's good.
Um, if they should decide, decide to double in size, um, there would be a loop put in.
Yep.
Over there to go, to triple the capacity.
Okay.
So that would handle.
Joins.
No.
Hand still.
Yep, they put a loop in the, into that, and that would triple what they'd be getting from day one. So basically, if they could double in size, we'd still have uh, another third of that capacity if they continue that. But worried more about just getting into Manly, get them what they would need for gas and two, three years down the road.
Time, money type of deal. Go get it done.
Then pay the extra. There's no sense of paying for that money now if it's, if they're not gonna expand or something, so.
Okay.
Know who's paying and how much.
Yeah.
Um.
Sorry, I'm always about to.
No, it's, it's a good question.
Well, I can tell you, you're just.
I mean, if it's talkable points, yes.
Yeah, it's, um, so. Prox to the best of us here. Well, say, uh, three, around eighteen million to get to Manly, and then if you put that loop in, like, seven to eight million with that loop in, um, original costs were slated at like thirty-five to forty million. We're going from Joyce, so this is significant savings to get.
So I was trying to remember what that original estimate was.
Yeah, it was, it was between thirty-five and forty million on that study, and that's coming from Joyce. So by coming from Hailtown, you're saving six miles of pipeline, which at roughly a million dollars a mile. So right off the top, it starts there. Um, but, so yeah, it's, uh, like you say, um, that's what we gotta figure out. It's who's gonna pay and how it's gonna get paid for. Uh, and we're, we're working directly with Northern Natural, so. It's, uh.
Cause is there enough justification of that project down there to pay for that?
Yeah, what, and the way they've got it slated right now coming to us is they will get paid back over time. Um, if, if Northern built it or, or if the Port Authority built it, and Northern would take it over.
So Northern could technically build this first pipeline.
Yeah.
Because it's not beyond capacity.
Right, got you. Yep, so that's, we gotta iron this out between the Port Authority and Northern Natural, how it's all gonna happen up. Because this, like I said, they're looking at nearly a hundred million dollar facility, so to build it. Um, and thirty, like they're guaranteeing thirty-two jobs.
That'd be good if they could, Northern won't actually build it, that would be better yet. I mean, something was worked out.
Right, yep, so that's what we've been working back and forth with them, um, what, how we can get it to work, what we can get to work together, so.
For the authority would be good too.
Yeah. Right.
It depends on being a gas business.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the key is, this, this gas line's going somewhere, so if somebody hooks onto it, you know.
Right.
That's, I made that very clear. We're not getting into it on utility. We got one as it is, and that's.
Thank you.
Could be good, could be bad.
I think that's.
I would prefer not to, unless you know.
Right.
They would do it.
Yeah, I've been working with Northern. We know, we've got an outlet for an operator and purchaser or vice versa, you know, if, if they build it, we build it, however, so. But, anyway, so yeah, well, wonderful. Well, maybe I'm that next week, so. That was it. All right. Um, exec boards out there, I'll pick anyone else need to be up there. We're all participating. Monday after.
Eleven thirty-one day.
All right, nothing else? Then I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, I'll second.
All in favor, I?
Bye.
Bye. It is adjourned. Take your break.